All right, apologies everyone for that technical difficulty. So we're going to move on to proclamations, presentations. I'm actually going to ask everyone to please rise while he goes reading the patient on the life of Dennis Carlson. So whereas in the month of May, even town lost a remarkable man who was known for his dedication to his family, his career in fire service and public safety, his community and his friends. And whereas Captain Dennis Carlson, who passed away at the age of sixty-two, dedicated a total of thirty-four years to the Tolland Fire Department and the town of Tolland. He started as a volunteer in May of nineteen eighty-nine and was later hired as a full-time career public safety officer in August of nineteen ninety-one. And whereas to name all he leaves behind would be nearly impossible, as the impact he made on others is far too great. Put into words, his family and his community are left with a hole in their hearts and the privilege of sharing Dennis's life. And whereas as a emergency responder, he served as a firefighter and EMT, was a rescue scuba diver and became Swift Water Rescue Certified for the Tolland County Dive Team. He developed the ATV and UTV training programs for the department, was a previous advisor for the Tolland Explorer Focus one forty-two and was selected by his colleagues to be part of the peer support team. A role that he naturally stepped into guiding coworkers and fellow responders through high-stress situations, but also with being an at-listening ear and a true light in a dark situation. Dennis is the first out of all Tolland-based career staff to have reached the milestone of over thirty years of service. And whereas Dennis was also an educator in the Tolland Schools as fire fighter. Dennis, teaching safety to town, fire prevention and developed a basic aid training number B, providing basic lifesaving skills to elementary kids. And whereas Dennis, a significant other, a son, a brother, a friend, a neighbor, a colleague, a husband, a dad, you'll be so deeply missed. You're truly one in a million and only one call away. Now therefore, I, Stephen Jones, Chair of the Tolland Town Council, on behalf of the town council and community at large, and proud to honor and celebrate the life of this longtime resident, public safety officer and friend, dated today, or dated Tolland, can I get this twenty-third day of May, twenty twenty-three? So just want to offer our condolences. And I believe before we present, I was going to offer, I believe, Joe DuVal was going to speak on behalf of the department, had something else to present.
All right, good evening, everyone. The ones that don't know me, my name is Joe DuVal, Jr., I serve as a firefighter here in the Tolland Fire Department. I've had the privilege of knowing Captain Carlson the last twenty-eight years since I've been, since I've been alive, you know, practically built the units the morning my mom went into labor. I've known him since I was, you know, newborn. And he worked alongside with my father, Joe DuVal, here in Tolland for approximately twenty-five years. So he was always around, especially when I was growing up. Captain Carlson will always be a part of my family as well as the Tolland Fire Department's family. He was a good friend, mentor, and truly a caring, loving and helpful person who would always help anyone at any time regardless of what he was doing. He would always stop and always help someone. Not a day goes by when I do not think of him and I will continue to honor him. I also serve as the Fire Department's historian, where one of my jobs is to get shadow boxes with badges made for current members that hit here's a service milestones. If a member retires, and I also provide them for the families if a member passes on. I cannot take the full credit for these shadow boxes. As a special thanks should go out to my uncle Jim DuVal, who prints, mounts the badges and assembles them into frames. So I'd like to thank him for these beautiful shadow boxes that he continues to create. The shadow boxes that I have up here would be tonight are going to be presented to the family of Captain Carlson. If I could have Amanda, Amy, Ryan and Reva come up here. On behalf of the Tolland Fire Department, these shadow boxes are being presented to you in memory of Public Safety Captain Dennis Carlson, dedicated service from nineteen eighty-nine to two thousand twenty-three.
Just also want to present, I'll give it to Ryan, I think I have the town council, we'll just want to operate this and go into the thing. There are there any other members of the council that would like to, Stephen, Captain Carlson, if you're more than welcome to open that up to the folks.
Of course, it's going to be not Jenny. I feel incredibly sad for your family along with the Fire Department. I personally didn't know him as well as a lot of other people, but he sounds like an amazing man. I could only tell when I went to your family, father's service, the outpouring of people that came. This shows how much the man was well-respected. I'm just deeply sorry and thank you for your father's service to our community.
It's really hard for me to to see, now to see his truck across the street. Walking, walking his truck, coming home from Dunkin' Donuts, having a cup of coffee and usually, I've known him for about, almost about ten years. Nice personality, everything else. I didn't believe when when blind sent the email asking for us about him. And as I said, I know him, his personality, everything else. He was very stubborn. And poetry notes, when I, it's really very, very humble and especially with the kids. And then hopefully driving around with his on the Christmas sign, going around passing it to the kids. I don't know how to say it, but I, I'm going to miss him. I'm still going to miss him. I don't think so. There aren't too many people like him to jump on everybody's business to help them out. It doesn't matter day or night. He did whatever it's supposed to be done for the community. And he did very well for, as he says, thirty-four years. I bless him and I'm wishing him the best for heaven and I'm going to miss him and the community.
Thank you, Councilor. Councilman Nuccio.
Hi there. I just wanted to first apologize for not being there tonight. I am, unfortunately, I'm out of state with a prior engagement right now. But I wanted to thank both of Dennis's families, not just his family, family, but also his firefighter family. I would like to just say, you know, Dennis shared himself with our community so fully and so freely. And I don't know if it's any comfort at all, but I find comfort in the fact that there are so many children in Tolland and now adults in Tolland who remember Dennis so fondly as firefighter Dennis, you know, who came into the schools and who taught the kids. All three of my girls have very fond memories of Dennis and for you to so openly share him with us, I know that's a sacrifice for the family. And I hope that you find some comfort in the fact that he will always live on in the lives of all of those children that he touched and again, who have turned into adults now, who still, still fondly remember firefighter Dennis. So I just want to thank you for sharing him so openly with our community and for allowing us to be part of your family.
Thank you, Councilman Nuccio, and the other council members. All right, well, thank you again. I appreciate you guys coming out and our deep has been known, so it's our heartfelt care and sympathy for you throughout this difficult time and how much Dennis means to this community. I hope everyone here tonight shows that as well as the groundswell support that was there a few weeks ago. So thank you again. And at this point, everyone can be seated if you need to leave at this point. Feel free to use sort of the other business to attend to. That will bring us to, you know, four point two, which of the proclamation recognizing June is Christ. So whereas the town of Tolland is a welcoming, inclusive community, an exceptional place to live, work and raise a family. And whereas the town of Tolland recognizes the importance of equality, justice for you all. And whereas the United States honors the nineteen sixty-nine Stonewall uprising first pride merchant in New York City in June nineteen seventy, with America's coming together to remember the courage and accomplishment made over multiple generations to advance the rights of lesbian, gay, bisexual and transgender and queer plus people. Whereas our LGBTQ plus neighbors who work in town, own a business, live in our community or raise their family here are an integral part of Tolland's population. And whereas the town of Tolland strives to make our town one where LGBTQ plus residents can thrive with dignity and protection and the opportunity to live their most open, authentic lives. And whereas the town of Tolland acknowledges rising challenges and threats to LGBTQ plus rights, representation and respect requires continuous education, awareness and compassion to end prejudice and discrimination. And whereas it is vital, our youngest residents, regardless of sexual orientation or gender identity, feel safe, being supported and empowered by their peers, educators and community leaders. And whereas Tolland is proud to support and protect the civil rights of the LGBTQ plus community as a part of our community's collective freedoms. And now therefore, the town, Tolland Council, on behalf of citizens of Tolland, on June twenty twenty-three, at LGBTQ plus prime moment and witness whereof, I appear to set my hand and cause a tear to Tolland to be fixed on this June thirteenth, two thousand twenty-three. That brings us to item five, public petitions, communications, participation. On any subject within the jurisdiction of the town council with a two-minute limit. If you are on a mobile device or on Zoom, you can start nine or the Ray Scan function. Or if you're in the audience, you can approach the table and just remember to state your name and address for the record. We'll start with in-person audience and then we'll switch to Zoom and go back and forth.
The audience. Sorry. All right. So I'm Bob DeRoy, ninety-two Merlot Way. And I'm one of the affected residents with water issue. And I guess there was that task force that was assembled and I haven't really heard too much. But what I want to say is this has been a problem for a long time and we all deserve clean drinking water. And I'd like to know what the plan is for the town to resolve that. Honestly, I think it's a real difficult problem and I would like to think that you guys are going to represent the residents of the town and act accordingly, but I really want to understand like what is going to go on to resolve this issue. The, you're in a box, right? Because it's a really expensive endeavor to run water up there. I think that's the only solution. I've had an RO estimate down on my property. I don't think my property is zoned for the water discharge and with the sanitaryian and only one acre or one and a third acre of property. I think that there's a lot of challenges with that and it's a very expensive endeavor as well. So I would like to understand like what are we going to go do to resolve this? And I think we have to go to higher levels. I think we have to go to the state or to the feds because I don't think the town can resolve it. And I don't think a referendum, the majority of the town people are going to approve bringing water out there. And I do believe that this is more of a systemic problem than we really think it is. We may say there are seventy residences up in the vineyards or in that area, but it, I think with that treatment that was done on the roads, it's affected a lot of wells and people just don't know. But we deserve clean water. And I think I want to understand and improve the communication with the people affected so that we can know where this is going. And honestly, I think the town is in a tough spot and they need help from the state or from the federal government with clean water. Thank you.
Double check if there's any band Zoom. It's the now, again, three, we'll go back to you in third person. Yes.
My name's Ed Tremblay, for Harvest Lane. I also have a contaminated well. Funny part is I'm on the Coventry side of town. And I've gone through, I built the house in nineteen twelve, I'm on my third water heater. I've just spent two thousand dollars on plumbing in my house with corrosion. And chlorides, when I built the house, were in the hundred and twenty range. They spiked up in two thousand sixteen up to four hundred, five hundred. Sodium is high. So again, it's a problem. I'll share it with this gentleman. I think you guys got to do something with the state. I personally, I got a five hundred foot well. I think a lot of my, I'm probably a mile from eighty-four. I think we're getting a lot of underground seepage from eighty-four. But that's just, I have worked with the DEP, I've worked with the Department of Public Health, but I'm just here to support these people. I don't, I don't live in their neighborhoods, but I have a problem. And the state knows it, the town knows it, but it's not an easy issue.
Thank you. Online, Mark Gilchrist. Last, you know, unmuted.
I'm Mark Gilchrist. I live at eighty-two Merlot Way. I'm Bob DeRoy's neighbor and I just wanted to second his remarks that we need clean water. I also want to state, quite frankly, I am disappointed in the town's response. And I understand it's a formidable problem, but there was a report done a year ago at least, or around that time, by the DEEP, which surmised that the pollution in our neighborhood was due to oversalting by the town and to some extent by runoff from water softeners. They were not able to apportion what went to which. My situation, I do not have a water softener. I never have. So I've been on this call before. I've asked the town or reminded them that there is a statute which they well know because they've been dealing with DEEP. I think DEEP took a bit of a flyer that the town would come up with a solution, so they held off on issuing consent order. I think that was a bad decision on the state's part because frankly, I don't see the town coming to any solution or even trying to. I, I think there has been some progress in deciding, okay, what do we do to stop the problem? You know, adjusting the road treatments, for instance, but there really hasn't been any serious discussion of what do you do for the damage that you've done? And under the statute and just under the general tort principles, with a situation like this, because you've created a nuisance to our properties, devalued their value, it's a joint and several situations. So if the town's in for one percent, they're in for a hundred percent. And they should take that seriously and do something accordingly, which has not been done. I don't want to go over my time, but it's such a simple thing. I don't think there's been transparency. One of my other, one of my other neighbors and I both made freedom of information requests to get the engineering report by Langen. The, the the letter that hired Langen said they were going to come up with a proposal for each of the properties. They were not going to try to apportion the responsibility. So I really don't know why that would not be released. Unless you consider the DEP to have a current claim, which from the letters I've seen, they do not. They're trying to let the town work it out for themselves. But if that doesn't happen, I can assure you there will be claims by the DEP and the residents as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Mark. Back to the in-person audience and speaking.
My name is Sean Laffin. I live at one sixty-eight Mountain Spring Road and I also have salt in my well due to road salt runoff. There's been progress in the town. I want to be forthright and be honest and say that they have made progress. You know, they did adjust road curving around my property. They did install a well, which I'm sure many people have seen. Unfortunately, those things have not rectified my problem. And to be honest, like the time, amount of time it takes to get those things is unacceptable. You know, from the town, from the time that the DEP issued the town the direct order to give me a well, it took still about a year, just under, to actually drill that well on my property. We tested it. Within two months, we knew the results and now it's, we're back to over a year, you know, six, seven months after Langen Consultants were hired to determine what the issues issue is and try to look at the properties on a holistic level between the vineyards and all the other properties. And yet there's crickets. There's a road salt task force that was created. There's no information on the meeting minutes or anything like that beside, we're looking at a pending litigation. To my knowledge, there's no, there's been no actual pending litigation. I'm in consultation with other people, other residents. So I'm curious to what that's in reference to. Because if that's what the town will take to get the town to move, then I can certainly go and go through the legal route and, you know, and sue the town. You know, I've been in contact with Connecticut Water, you know, it's a million dollars, give or take, to run, you know, public municipal water to my property, thirty-five hundred feet away from a municipal water source. I've done the legwork on trying to, trying to get an RO system, give or take forty grand for the installation. That doesn't consider, so that what this gentleman mentioned about the actual dispersal system for the wastewater, which in talking to the health district, the sanitaryian, I'm going to need to get an engineer out to draw plans in order to do that, just to potentially put in this. I have to figure out how to fit on my property in addition to my septic system. Again, I'm willing to do all the legwork. If it's a management issue that you guys are running into of like, you can be the ones to kind of oversee these contractors. I'm more than happy to submit bids to you guys and you guys tell me who to go with and I'll oversee the work. I'm in the process, I'm in the process of building another house and I can't hold on to my current property for much longer. You know, it's devaluing it every day. I'm being, I'm being continuously poisoned by this and it's also damaging my infrastructure in my house. I've gone through three well pumps, two water heaters and a bunch of other things. Every water shut up in my house has been replaced at this point in time. It's also impacting my life. You know, my wife and I were just looking to start a family. DCF has told us our house is not a suitable condition for children in any way. You know, it's, I mean, I can't move because I lose seventy thousand, maybe more on the property value. Who knows? It's kind of an unknown. I'm talking to my realtor. And if I stay, I can't start a family the way that I want it to. So this is, this is unacceptable and it needs to move forward faster. And if that, if it can't happen with, you know, carrot, I can make it all stick. Thank you.
With back to you on Zoom that would like to speak. All right, seeing no one else will continue with in-person participation. What?
I have a more house, eighty-nine Merlot Way, Tolland. I'm just going to think back on everything they've said. This is a two-hundred-and-eighty-page salt study from Yukon in the state of Connecticut dated twenty fourteen. Back then it was read by Pat Wilson Phineas. And she called me personally and said, this is basically, the salt is corrosive. They know it's corrosive and they're going to use it anyway. This folder here is all my repairs to my house. Thirty-five thousand dollars plumbing from heating systems to hot water heaters, to well troll tanks, to well plumbing, everything. All my fixtures have had to be replaced, down to my toilets because they eat away at the enamel. This is the possible solution. We need a meeting with the town manager and the task force or whoever wants to sit with us. This is crap because all you guys are doing is chasing your tails. This has been going on now for six years and my patients have gone. I can't afford this anymore. Who's going to reimburse me for thirty-five thousand dollars? I have a estimate from Culligan Water. Forty thousand dollars and that doesn't include the seven thousand plus for a drainage, bleach fielding system that also has to be approved, per tested by the Eastern Highland Health District. When is enough is enough. Every time something happens in town, we get pushed aside and our issues aren't that important. We keep waiting and waiting and waiting. Everything now is in executive session, a big secret. We did for you for information, just to know what's going on. I think we're entitled to know this. This is our issue. This is our daily life. We don't have any potable water. When are we going to get it? Another six years? You people have your town attorney on top of this. Are you telling us we need to get an attorney? I've been holding up. I'm not that type of person. I'm not a sue happy person. I live in this town. I work in this town. I work for people in this town. It's time we, we start addressing this issue and really get serious about it. If we can't do it at a town level, go to the state, go to the federal government. Didn't our president put in a Clean Water Act? I think we're entitled to that. Thank you.
Anyone else online that would like to speak? Seeing none, we'll go back to in-person participation. Is anyone else in the public? All right, seeing none. We will move forward with public hearing items. There are none. Reports of boards and committees responsible to the town council. I'll just start up at the firehouse committees meeting this Thursday. There was a change order that will be done for a water tank that had been replaced for Station three forty on Gare Road. Otherwise, the project's moving on time and our budget. And that's it for the parks, many park of something. Does any major updates or anything significant?
Have any major updates? I believe at the end of this month, haven't seen the agenda yet, so.
Ryan, are there, actually, Brian and customer, are there any updates from the task groups that you'd like to provide at this time or are you planning to at the town manager's quarter?
We determined to solve our task force. Yes, sir. Not a task force. Sure. You know, I got here a year ago, almost not even. And when I got here, there were some things that have been lingering around this town for years and years and years and I can keep going on saying years. I don't intend on dealing with it my entire time that I'm here. And I immediately started to try to find a solution. I'm not a water expert. Don't claim to be. No one here is a water expert. The town has no water expert. We have to hire a water expert. I believe we did that. The intent of hiring the water expert was not to hide, but it's solution-based in coming up with the solutions. I know you want the report. We all want it out there too. I asked today, I've waited to hear back from our town attorney, how when it can come out. As far as litigation, there's a pending insurance claim and that's what it's in relation to. I understand your frustration. I understand it more than some of you know. I'll leave it there, but, but I believe we hired the best people to move forward. I'm not sure our state, water experts at deep are the best experts. And I think he has a well at his house. It's not working to attest to exactly that. We believe we've hired better experts. We hope to have a plan and I'm not going to stop. At the same time, we're also working with our folks in the tax office to come up with a tax adjustment, for lack of a better term, in the official terms, similar to that with the foundations. And I think everyone's in agreement on that as well. So while it may appear things are going slow and I understand that they are. I've been here less than a year. I have a lot of things that have been lingering around here for ten years or longer. I'm certainly trying to get those things behind me. I do not enjoy sitting here, listening to these concerns any more than anybody else. So that, that's where we stand. Hopefully we'll have a report out soon, specifically related to Mountain Spring and all boasts. But, but again, I did not get a date yesterday.
Thank you, Brian. And no other reports for things from the town council. Zoom to seven B reports of town council liaisons and I'd like you to start with Councilman Nuccio if you're able to unmute yourself and give me reports.
You got it. Is my video on? It shows that it is, but I don't see me, so. No, okay. You guys see me. I don't see me. Um, no, now it's doing else. I got something else weird. So I, PCC, we had a very successful, um, So I had uh P C C. We had a very successful, um, very successful fourth, not Fourth of July, holy moly, Memorial Day Parade. And the P C C is currently in the process of um planning for the Harvest Fest already, so that's a good one. Uh, that's about all that I have right now.
Right, actually, one quick question, uh, Councilman Nuccio. Is Celebrate Talon still coming up this, this September? Is that still coming up or did they?
No, as far, so, hold, hold on, for some reason my phone's doing something weird. So from what I understand, it is that's handled through the rec department, not uh P C C. I think it's kind of in concert with P C C, but it's really the rec department that handles and coordinates that. But as far as I know, it's still gonna be there um this September, so that would be before the Harvest Fest. I know Harvest Fest, we're looking at um expanding on to the other green a little bit more. Uh, we're already reserving food trucks. We got Cousins Lobster Truck. So I don't know my own love lobster like I do, but they have the Cousins Lobster Truck. I think we're gonna have Hops forty four there for a cider too, but in the process of expanding it, that will be obviously after, after um the Celebrate Talon though.
That's great. Thank you, Councilman Nuccio, for those updates. Uh, Councilman, your chance.
Hello. Uh, I actually don't have anything to report. The Recreation Veggie Board has left a forum unfortunately on Monday night, so. Go ahead.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. That, uh, I wasn't able to attend the uh, the V R C meeting, but I did have an opportunity to speak to members uh and review the minutes that some of the updates that they have on there. That they are, the ongoing social meetings that they have where uh they have the regular meetings over at one of the local churches for a coffee hour and then a uh social hour uh over uh at uh
at the spot.
Yes, thank you. On a long day. Um, at the spot, that the biggest thing that we're doing right now is working on uh developing design and getting uh actual quotes on the work for the uh Veteran Memorial. And uh there was um emails and discussions going back and forth regarding the uh uh the proposal that the V R C has been working with the uh historic district commission on discussing the issues and um that uh they are actually, the V R C is going to be meeting with a few people to get quotes uh later on this week for the work to be done. Also, the other issue that they, that they're reviewing is that there is a uh video uh wall of honor that one of the members observed that they're going to be visiting and uh and checking out to see if it's something that they might want to try and adopt within the town hall here. Um, and then we do have replacement of one of the newest, uh newest members coming up uh later on in the agenda and that's fine.
Great, thank you, Councilman Luba. And you actually reminded me that uh her item seven A reports uh stops the council's line acquisition advisory.
I was gonna mention that.
Yeah, met yesterday. Uh, we had to make an adjustment to the assessment for the Talomarsh property uh because it was specialized parcel, so. That adjustment was made moving forward of that. Uh, otherwise, the water commission had to cancel their meeting uh June nineteenth. Due to lack of forum, it's been rescheduled at least for the twenty eighth. And that is it for me. Vice President.
Yes, uh, Planning and Zoning met last night. There was discussion of about two thirty two Plains Road. Uh, uh, the owner there is looking for a two lot re-subdivision. It's a fifty two acre parcel and that kind of looking to remove two acres for the future building of a, of a home. Uh, there was discussion of zoning, regular regulatory amendment um for an adult daycare on whose lane that is looking to move into a new site at the um, at the technology center. And then there was discussion, um, just a general discussion about the sidewalks on the green. Uh, various members of Plinings of the Planning and Zoning Commission had uh different ideas about uh the way that should be handled, uh with the understanding that no decisions have been made yet. Just the, the only thing that's happened so far is the application of the uh Parfa funds for that project. Uh, so there was a general discussion.
That was a, right, Vice President, Councilor.
A D C uh met uh and we just spoke about uh how we're doing and now in caring.
That you, Councilor, Councilman.
The agriculture vision that uh speak, I was not able to adapt. See that.
Thank you, Councilman. That brings us to item eight, new business, eight point one is a review of the town. Oh, sorry, go ahead. Councilor, you check, go ahead.
Go ahead. I was just wondering if I could make a motion to change up the agenda so a state trooper, Eflin, doesn't have a say for a good portion of it. We could move up eight point three.
Sure.
Like you said, so. I don't know if that's too late to do that or we're gonna do that.
I think that's a, that's a friendly uh motion, so there's a motion on the floors. There's second.
Second.
Second by Councilor Luba. And so just to clarify for Lisa, we're moving eight point three up to the rate we wanted, so. Any further discussion? Seeing none, we'll do a quick roll call vote. Councilman Murray?
Aye.
Councilor Collins? Vice President?
Aye.
Councilor Luba?
Aye.
Councilman Nuccio?
Aye.
And Councilman Nuccio?
Aye.
I have an aye, so that is unanimous, so. We will move eight point three, the discussion on update of the street takeover following public forum on June eighth, twenty twenty three is now a new item eight point one, so. Click it on to uh town manager Foley, if you want to give a quick summary and obviously, as we mentioned, Tru Brackland is with us today as well. And the packet was provided to the council, being incorporated into the minutes uh from that um from that meeting.
Okay, so as you know, on May twenty first, there was an incident here in town on a Sunday night with a street takeover on New Gataland. Uh, I say it created a lot of concern in town and um so much of a concern that there was uh meetings with state uh agencies desk, uh the commissioner and the colonel and others uh put together by a state representative, uh Nuccio from that. Um, there was a public meeting here in town last week as well. Um, but all of that um is really uh to underscore what it's actually occurred and that is a lot of positive uh changes immediately uh by the Connecticut State Police and I can't say enough how hard it is to get a police agency to change sometimes, um, and they rapidly in, in less than a week um came up with some great ideas that proved to be um s- early, early success. Uh, but with that, I have uh Tru Brackland here uh to talk about some of those uh positive things that they did.
All right, I'll open the floor to Tru Brackland. If you want to write some commentary, feel free.
Yeah, sure. I mean, certainly I would, you know, refer everybody to that public forum meeting because I think that's, I don't want to contradict what our colonel came forward and spoke as, as well as our lieutenant. So I encourage everybody, if you didn't get a chance to look at it, I know there's, it's on YouTube, there's links to get to it, so you can watch that public forum to get the real specifics and the details. Would say that yes, you know, after this uh unfortunate event took place, um, obviously the state police took uh some immediate action. Uh, I think most of you know, you know, some complete information has been on the news, our task force has been formulated and they're currently uh, you know, monitoring social media, which is kind of the way these folks are communicating, so they're able to do a lot of that work and intercept a lot of these, you know, uh incidents from taking place prior before they did. So it definitely events of good positives that have come out of it. Uh, I can't really get into too many of the details of how the investigations are working. Uh, I'm not actually privy to a lot of that either because that's something that's uh being worked on by a lot of our B S I detectives and other folks, so. There have been arrests made. I think that's obviously been in the public as well. Um, as you all know, if you watched that meeting, you know that there was an arrest that night uh right after the event took place here. One of the ringleaders um was arrested and apprehended, being charged with multiple different charges. Um, I know one of the individuals that um did some damage to that vehicle uh by the Big Y uh juvenile was apprehended and arrested on the work. And it sounds like they're anticipating more arrests to come out of that as well. So I am in communication with those folks, they, you know, that are doing uh that investigative work. They're keeping me updated to a certain, you know, certain point. Um, so I'm more than willing to share that information once that information, you know, gets out there, this is more of a rest. I have met a couple of times with the victims um of that um tragic uh event uh on two different occasions. I wanted to make sure I got to them before I got to the knee here about the arrest of the juvenile, which I did. I drove out to their house and met with them and told them they had been arrested and that was many hours before the media, so that they had that uh information towards them, because I think they understood. So I mean, that's, I mean, again, I, I would really refer you to, if you didn't get to see that in the public forum meeting, I encourage you, obviously you may have, but to review that and look at that because I think, you know, again, the Lieutenant Colonel did a fantastic job explaining everything and how, you know, everything kind of went down prior to what happened and after it happened. And then Eric Seagull here also kind of gave a pretty good detailed outline of how everything actually happened that night.
Thank you. Brian, what have you got there?
You know, we build on that a little bit. Lieutenant Colonel Kane um was, was very clear um that should this happen again in Talon, uh they would, the state police would give a uh full force, as he said, uh response uh to it if it were to happen here and it was uh very convincing uh fashion. Uh, some other things, um, Sea Ticket and Center, basically a watch center uh is involved in watching these things and, and the social media that the state police and, and other police departments now do as these things are live happening, basically to uh warn people uh to avoid them has, has proven um to be very successful. Uh, so I, I thank them for that. I thank the resident troopers as always um for their, their work. They were not a part of this uh that night at all, so I understand that and we have, but we have obviously, I'm sure everyone has their own complete confidence, uh Kevin, in the uh resident troopers and in Troop C. Uh, and, and I believe, I believe Lieutenant Colonel Kane and take him in his work.
Right, yeah, and I would just say this too. I mean, there's, there's some very good communication, you know, amongst myself and the town manager. We communicate all the time. They'll call me at all hours of the night and that's okay. And there's also a very good open line to the barracks as well. So, you know, the town manager calls me, hey, something going on. I said, stand by, I'll find out for you and I'll make a call. So rest assured, there's solid and really open and good communication between us and the town as well as the barracks.
That's great, thank you. And, and I know you have a pack in front of us, but just probably for just community's education, what are the best steps? If, you know, if this were to happen or if they see suspicious activities, something might be working in an event, what actions should residents take so that in terms of responding and getting the right response from, from the uh barracks or from resident troopers that happens during, during that shift?
So again, that public forum, I mean, they went over that uh message in very good detail and I know there's been a lot of press information pushed out by our department on what to do.
Yeah.
So it took me, if people know that something's not right, something's about to happen, they may see these vehicles coming in to a certain location, they need to give us a call right away ASAP. Um, on the flip side of that, I think, you know, we're, obviously if you're, and I had people come up to me. Actually, when I worked at the parade, you might have people come up to me and they came into that event and they immediately said, well, this doesn't look right. So they turned the car around and, you know, got out of Dodge pretty quick. So obviously, I think to the public, if you happen to run into this and you can see it ahead of you and you have plenty of time to turn around and obviously exit safely and obviously that's what we would recommend you do. And at the same time, you know, calling nine one one so that we know what's happening at the time. And if we can get there, obviously before they begin to kind of formalize, then that's where we'll be much more successful.
Okay. And then there's one other question I have is um, I know Atlas One has been relatively successful and I'm just wondering what efforts we need to, to think that obviously never let this happen again. But how, but does that sync up to any particular issue when this gets escalated that it could have been pinged out to the entire community that this was going on? Versus I think a lot of us seem to start finding it out on social media, unfortunately, and it kind of grew from there until we're trying to find information till after the fact.
So yes, so obviously we know Atlas One is in its infancy stages and we just got that uh platform here. We don't have a lot of contributor, but we're now pushing up around eight hundred, maybe nine hundred. So we'll reach, a lot of those people may not be in our community too. So we're trying to obviously to scan that to try to get it to as many people as we can. So with that said, you know, in its infancy stages, we have, you know, the full resident troopers or administrators to that platform. Meaning that if an incident comes in and we're informed of that incident, we will immediately alert that information out. We have to do a better job gaining more administrators to that and system. We're the only state police uh resident trooper program, but we're the only state troopers in the entire state of Connecticut that has this platform. Okay, brand spanking new to us. There's only three other police departments in the entire state of Connecticut that have this, this platform. So we need to do a better job um getting more administrators, so I'm gonna reach, I've already reached out to some of the supervisors that are working other shifts, like midnight shift and another one on evening shift. So be that if I'm not here, somebody is gonna have access to be able to, you know, disseminate information quickly. Uh, but so we're, again, it's in, it's in messy stages, so we are working on that. It will get better and we will, you know, get it perfection.
I appreciate it. Thank you, Tru Brackland. Appreciate all the answers and now it's something that I think is really beneficial and as it becomes a group, hopefully it becomes a model for other barracks, other departments to take forward.
Right.
Um, that's it for me for questions for now, but all of them on the floor. Any questions from other council members or any other direct questions directed to Town Manager Foley or Tru Brackland to the best of their abilities?
Councilor Luba? Well, thank you very much, Mr. Chair. So more comments where, as I've said in the last meeting, that um, I've had the honor of working with uh, with uh Tru Brackland uh for several years now and uh for most of the resident state troopers within the uh program within the area, Troop C, Troop D and uh that uh I understand the, the very difficult position that the uh, that the line officers uh with yourself as well were put in on that day. Uh, it was a horrible situation, but I think it was, if anything, it was a good learning experience for uh the Connecticut State Police at large um on how to, how to address these issues. It's always difficult to handle something like this. And I said, having, you know, having been in Britain and us trying to get a hold of that when we had issues like this in Newington, the surrounding areas, it's, it's extremely uh harrowing to, to observe and extremely frightening for those that are involved in it. Think that uh to answer one of your questions of Mr. Chair is, what should people do? There's that old adage that he had uh years ago, you see something, say something. That it's something that if, if it doesn't look right and, you know, if you're, if you take, if you're concerned enough where you're turning around or leaving an area, then that's something that the police should definitely call up. Because if you're concerned about it, somebody may not be as observant and now they place themselves into a situation that they may not have any situational awareness of. So I just want to extend uh my uh thanks myself as working with you, as uh, as law enforcement as well, but also as a, one of the town council members to thank you very much for all, all of the resident state troopers here within Talon. We're very blessed of what I think is probably one of the best resident state troopers programs that I've ever dealt with in my career. Um, and that uh the support we definitely received outstanding and I think that this is a horrible situation, but it's something that we can move on from. Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Councilor Luba. And I can see Councilman Nuccio, your hand is raised.
Yeah, I just wanted to kind of pile on there and just thank Kevin, um, thank the resident troopers office for always, you know, doing such a great job that specifically, you know, Trooper Eklund was, was at the forum and uh it was nice to see him and the other resident troopers there. Once again, giving our residents um that, that, that feeling of being protected and um appreciated. So I just hope that he knows how much we appreciate him and the resident trooper program and I just wanted to say um thank you again for all the work that you guys do and um for helping to restore the public's confidence. I appreciate it.
Thank you, Councilman Nuccio. Any other comments, questions? Councilor Collins?
Yeah.
My only question. Thing is that about two years ago, there was a, one of the trooper was died on eighty four. And over emergency department, one fire department, there'll be every single volunteer within the whole world, they were on the street. Black, you know, highway, black, you know, drive, drive in the traffic, everything else. The whole town was well managed. That, I think that's what I call the emergency plan. You cannot make a plan for, you cannot make a plan for emergency, something might happen. The plan crashed, now what happened? On May twenty first, it was an accident. And it was an emergency for the town. And I think uh to me, I think Troop C are not going after any troopers. They are doing whatever they've been told to. But whomever made their call to stand back. I think that's not appropriate. Because there was a woman and there was an ambulance like within. What happened? God bet what happened if that woman was injured or dead or whatever it is, what would happen? And as though then, the Troop C, the Troop, they wasn't there to protect that woman. They took, you had the trooper. They took her on. They took her on to the citizen. And I think they've grown that. And says, I'm not going after the Troop. When women, they are doing what they have been told to do that. So I think it's like, you can make all the plans for the future. But the citizens of town, they want to know what happened, why it happened, why you wasn't there. And it's been almost about three weeks now. If we haven't got the response, why? Because quality was too skilled. Was, their life is more important than the woman was there? It was like I don't know what to say. Like, I don't know what to come up with. Because there is still no answer why. I think they should have come down earlier. With a vehicle, somebody, they're the song, you know what? We are sorry. You feel. I think with the talent, that talent, that's what it. Okay, next. And so far, we haven't got an answer yet. And that's what we are looking for. You'll see from town manager or anybody else. And at the town council, if I cannot protect citizens, what I have to do then? Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Khan. Any other comments from council members?
Okay. Oh, okay. I like, it's gonna be like, I said at the last council meeting, and I was obviously disappointed again that Sammy said that disappointed with what the men and women do for, you know, community as state officers. They do with their cool, just like any of us are told at a job. And but I did, in that meeting, if I remember, I said, it's a learning, something we learn from. Like we just said, it's unfortunate that you have bad things that we have to learn this way. And I think this was one of those learning things. And I saw, it was a week later, and Harper's in the tunnel. Troopers flew in, they knew something. And I'm like, well, maybe they've learned something from Talon. I have no idea, or there's something else they knew more about. My, you know, that poor woman, her car being damaged, or ambulance being damaged enough was a comeback call or stolen up from gas according to this, but I hate for that damage. You know, so. But again, I appreciate everything state troopers do when you do Trooper Eklund for our community. And I hope the community has been restored of feeling some safety again because I'm sure that you guys would do whatever you could if there was an emergency. And we'll never know what happens behind closed doors, right? Who's going to talk to? I'm sure Sammy, where this call came from. Well, we won't know. You know, that's things that happen. I'm sure whoever was at fault part has been spoken of. But just like any job, you're not going to really know what's being said. But I believe that, you know, our community is still safe and self-aware and it's curved.
Yeah, agreed. Brian, come on, spot him and then Mr. Eklund.
It's incredibly unfair to say any of the troopers are scared. It's unfair to compare it to a trooper's in the line of duty death. And it's unfair to Trooper Miller to drag his name into this. And I stand by that. In the line of duty death is a completely different situation. And part of the response from law enforcement or fire department when they are killed is a part of the wellness that an officer knows that they could possibly die. And that when they do something like that, what happens? To compare the two is completely different. At the same time, Councilor Khan, I understand your frustrations. I think at the event the other night, the Lieutenant Colonel went through exactly how thought process went. I can tell you from experience, it's very difficult to get a law enforcement agency ever to say they're suffering. And that there are a lot of legal reasons behind that. Counselor or Lieutenant Colonel Kane did everything he could to do exactly that and was vehement in his statement that it certainly would not happen again. And if things would not be done the same way as they were before. And I couldn't have more confidence in that with him. So that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Brian. Thank you, Mr. Chair. I have a different perspective, I think, than some of my colleagues here. And was at the forum. The reasons why were addressed. One of the first things Lieutenant Colonel said was, this is on me. That's what he said. I sat there and listened to him. And to me, that's leadership. That's what it's all about. Somebody took responsibility for it. I appreciate the fact that that meeting was organized and put together so quickly. There was a pretty good turnout. My estimation was there were probably over a hundred, a hundred fifty people in that school. We originally had it scheduled for the fire training center and town manager was told that that may not be big enough for the people that wanted to come. It probably wasn't a parking for people because of the the chatter going on out there. There were a lot of people that were interested in this. So the decision was made to move it to a more appropriate venue, which was a good decision. So from my perspective, I think this whole thing was handled perfectly. I think that the state troopers showed tremendous leadership, took responsibility. And I'm thankful that they're here. So thank you for that.
I appreciate that, John, because I couldn't make that mention, but it's glad. It's so glad to hear someone took responsibility. I mean, that's hard. So thank you for giving an update on that.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Councilor Nunez. Any other comments, Councilmember?
I would request that any information that was provided at this public forum be made available to the town and the town council. This public forum was not a town event. And despite the request of the council to have a town event, we still haven't, unfortunately. And I appreciate, Trooper Eklund, that you referenced information that was given out at that event. But that I don't have that information. And I think a lot of people in town don't. And I know that at our last town council meeting, we specifically asked for that. This is, this information is helpful. And I really appreciate the work and the obvious attention this incident has brought in terms of community building and ensuring that we as a community continue to have faith in our police. But I would still say, Mr. Chair, that the requests made of this council have not yet been talked.
I know it's still in process. I actually communicated with the town manager's office, the under executive assistants, they're working with CSP and state delegation gets a little bit of information over to the council. And I think from there, we disseminated through the appropriate channels, manager's office, public. But with that, I see Councilman Nunez handed the raise.
Thank you, Steve. I just felt the need to speak again because as Brian said, I kind of take exception to the fact that Trooper Miller was brought into this or any indication that our resident troopers did not respond appropriately. The call to handle the incident, the way that it was handled, was at the highest level of CSP. It was not our resident troopers. It was not any shape, means, or anything else on them. And in the, in the police, you do what you are told to do. It has nothing to do with whether or not they were afraid to do this. They are not afraid. I do not know a single trooper that is afraid to do their job, but they do what they are told to do. And that is, the Lieutenant Colonel, very first, right from the beginning, said he accepted responsibility for this. And he outright said, I am sorry. He accepted responsibility for this event and apologized for it. The forum was very well attended. There was over a hundred and, I would say, at least a hundred and fifty people there. There was also a
See, there is a point of order. My apologies. I just have to address quickly.
The council person is providing information secondhand from the police. This is information that we passed directly from the police. So I question whether it's appropriate for ever of our council to be testifying on behalf of the police.
It's not a testimony. It's an opinion. And it was also plainly stated at the meeting, which there were over a hundred and fifty residents personally and about a hundred on Zoom. Anybody that's in that office right there with you right now, including Vice Chair John Regan and Town Manager Brian Foley, can attest to what was said in the public forum. You know, it was, and I believe, I don't even know if it's on that handout or not there, but it's also been videoed. It's been released to the public. It's on YouTube, as Trooper Eklund said. Not exactly embargoed information. So, and he said that at the meeting, point blank. It was his decision as field operations. So it's not testifying on behalf. It's reiterating what was said in a public forum that everybody's had the opportunity to either attend or watch by now. But either way, I take exception with the fact that people are trying to make it seem like the police were unafraid. We have the best troopers and our resident troopers. When the event happened, Trooper Eklund wasn't even on duty. So, you know, I just feel the need to, once again, say, I appreciate our resident troopers. I appreciate what they do. And I recognize this was not in any way, shape, or form, something that they made the decision to do or to not do. They weren't even on at the time. So for me, it's a matter of keeping the conversation in the, if you want to say blame or accountability at the level at which it should be, which I think that's where it needs to stay. Thank you. Thank you, Chairman Jones.
Councilman Nunez, and yes, I think we'll just reiterate the request for information, obviously, and Brian, you had to work with CSP and continue to provide the information to the council.
Specifically, what would you like, Mr. Chair?
Any documentation that was provided at the forum outside of this. I don't think it's a timeline sheet that I know Sarah was looking to provide. I think it was any additional relevant documentation that should be presented to the council, to the public. I think that would be prudent in terms of informational purposes, you know, essentially, you know, everything, like everything was at the forum. Just trying to make sure, I know it's been a number of times.
Nothing was handed out. I asked for handouts. Nothing was handed out. It was all visual in a screen. And I requested that day. And, but I'm happy to get and try to get a link of where it is and share that. And I, and I'll, Sarah, I've been trying to get that timeline.
Yeah.
No, we appreciate it. I have some concerns, but I'll try my best to get the timeline to all of you. And you have this already. That was all, that was the entirety of the visual aids was documentation, was that. And I'll try to get a link and share it with council.
Thank you, Brian. Yeah, no, I think it'd just be good to get that to, yeah, for the clarification of what's, like you provided and appropriated in the minutes and just up to the community. Because again, not everyone, the Zoom meeting, they make in person. And I know we have residents that don't have access to computers that would like this information physically available. So just want to make sure it's as current as possible for the public.
I understand the frustrations. I do. But in a public safety sense, well, I think we could be in a better place. I know not everyone's happy how it went down. I chop on board with that as well, but the big picture. I think in a public safety, and I have some experience in this field, I think in a public safety sense, our town couldn't be better protected at this point. And that was a, like, a single blip of an incident.
No, I'll do a council review. You can make a council, Mary.
Oh, go ahead.
Okay, do you want to?
No, I was just gonna say, yeah. I feel like we've just been talking about this for so long. I'm sorry. I've missed the video. Couldn't go again to the meeting. Plus, I guess if this ever happens again to a town manager and to whatever department, with the state police or the fire department. But I wish it would have been set up that the town council would have been more involved in that plan stage because if I heard it right, if we had too many, we would have had a court. It would have been a legal meeting. It is what it is. But again, just in the future, Brian, I'm fully that somehow it can be arranged that it's set up. So I mean, the council, we're not as big as the state, but we do represent our community. And I just feel like it would have been a little nicer for the council to be able to have been.
If the council wants to put that on my shoulders, fantastic.
I want, I'm just saying, I'm not saying, I'm just saying for the future. It's not, I'm just, yeah, I'm not mad at anybody. I don't get mad anymore. But I'm just saying that it would have been, you know. You know, Steve, anyways, I'm just giving that out there for the meeting council, if it ever happens.
Councilor Mary?
I would just like to reiterate some of the things we talked about last, at our last meeting, that maybe we need to continue to put a focus on the community building efforts that I know that our resident state troopers office spearheads already. And I think just getting the word out a little bit more on some of the community events that you hold, Trooper Eklund. I think the more interaction that our public has with you and your office, the more comfortable we are as a community in you and with you. And so, Brian, maybe you could work with the troopers office to make sure that any community building events that are happening, maybe get a little bit more publicity and we can get some more of our citizens there to continue to build on our community.
Of all that. Thank you, Councilor Mary.
I don't know if Tammy had her hand up earlier.
No, I think she went back down. I think it was earlier. She's good. Yeah, she's shaking. All right. Seeing no further discussion, just again, thank you, Trooper Eklund. You're at home for the night. Appreciate you being with us and be well, be safe.
Thank you.
Good powers have our legally parked out front.
All right. That brings us to new item eight point two, which is a review and discussion of the town council goals that were set on December twenty eighth, twenty twenty-one. As you can see through the packet, there's a weak point response. These are somewhat refreshed, rehashed from our last review. But I'll allow this, probably want to do a quick rundown. If there's anything new in there that you want to highlight, absolutely open that to you and then.
You want me to just kind of give a cursory of all of it and then run right through it? Questions after?
Yeah.
Okay.
View and then we'll carry over.
Okay, item one. If you look at the mission statement, our mission statement was crafted in two thousand and nine. I don't think anyone would disagree that it needs to be refreshed. And you'll see my suggestion in there. I can set up a workshop and I believe that in two thousand and nine workshop was put together to put this, that mission state, mission statement together. I'm happy to do that. And I'm open to suggestions. Maybe I'll put an email out to council as to who should be a part of that workshop. The, as far as the vision statement, there's two vision statements here in town. One in relation to town services and one that was more recently put into our P O C D. And then if you look at a strategic plan, and I worked, I talked to Krav and CCM as well, just about every municipality that redoes a vision statement or a as with the P O C D, that vision statement, a consultant is hired. as with the P O C D, that vision statement, uh, a consultant is hired. Um, vision statement's much cheaper as opposed to a strategic plan. Um, if we wanted, if we would like to do that, we would like half the budget money um for that process. And that can range between anywhere between eighty-five hundred and three thousand. We do have two pretty decent, I think, uh, vision statements, both uh are very appropriate. I'm happy to do a workshop to try to combine those um as well. So I'm, I'm, I'm open to uh suggestion of this council on which way uh to move with those. The succession planning, um, when I moved in, uh, needs were identified and addressed in the interest of talent retention. I've tried to change um some of the leadership approaches um with our staff. I think we've been successful, every, every job that we've posted um since I've been here has been building on, building with the amounts of um applicants, I don't, I don't, I'm not that narcissistic to think that it's me that caused that, but I think it's a positive atmosphere around the town uh that is assisting uh with that currently we're under, we're doing our first uh employee evaluation process. I, I, I look forward to that, um, and I think that's an opportunity um to have some discussions where I believe uh we could tweak some things to make it services better for the town, so to speak. ARPA is moving well, as you can see, uh, we got four, four point three million. We've uh spent or encumbered about two point seven uh of that, and we have some great stuff on our list. And we have a list attached to this document, we also, it's suggested on the chair, and we've posted it on our website. And it's also uh kept up to date, and I believe our ARPA commission um works very well uh together. Uh promote fiscal policies that are designed to maintain the town's triple A bond rating status. I think that's um something that's fan, fantastic, and it shouldn't be understated that uh one of the things they look at is whether or not the referendum passes. Uh, and this town did pass a referendum this year um on the first try. So, and I thank everyone, uh, council uh for uh being involved with that. I recently sat in a town administrator process for a neighboring town, uh, and I was able to hear uh how they, they wish they had the um, for lack of, the tax stabilization funds and, and then extra funding that we have um in order to maintain that the triple A uh bond rating, as their, their rating was not as high as ours. So uh we have our, we have strong policy, um, thanks to uh our, our um financial director um and council. Smart decisions, although I'm sure sometimes painful um were made, and, and uh we are staying on track to maintain that triple A uh bond rating. We will have an opportunity to get another look again um this September when we go through the uh same process. Again, one of the highlights of our town is that we do not have um any retirement or any pensions. Uh. As far as um regional efforts, I am currently working with CROG on combining our town animal control. We, we're not, we're not able to, we're unable to combine with Ashford in regards to getting um grant funding to assist us with that. Uh, but however, the, the opportunity for Wellington uh is going to move forward and to see if that is a viable option uh for us. Evaluating public safety needs, I think that's uh fairly robust here, um, as we witnessed tonight in our, in our, our meeting. Uh, but I think we're in a, in a very good place. We're currently down in ambulance, uh, we've saved some significant money in our capital improvements plan by really looking at our um apparatus and the needs uh moving forward. Um, and that, that uh also builds into my um capital improvements plan in regards to um replacing things in, in a timely manner. Uh, DPW, that consultant, thank you, council, for allowing me to hire a consultant. I'll re-await their report in regards to the um apparatus of uh DPW, where we are at, and whether or not we need to thin out um the stuff, the, the um, um fleet in relation to the, the town's needs without affecting our town's needs, similar to how we've, uh, Chief Lightell has worked with the town uh to get that done as well. Complete uh at least two of the fire stations within three years, well, uh, while that may have been one, one of the goals, I think we're in a good place. I don't think we're going to replace um Plains Road, I don't think uh the needs that have gone over that. The, the current replace of three forty um at Garing's Road is uh underway uh and going well. And, and I believe we have a meeting this week with our um fire house committee.
Yeah.
troubling foundations issue is, is pretty much, I think, leveled out and improving. I guess would be the, the way to, to say that. However, uh, for the eight buildings at Talon Meadows um have the issue. So um it's, but it's leveling out with our tax folks, and Jason is, is pretty uh strong in, in relation to that. Um, advocate at a state level to address well water concerns within town, I believe our state rep is working on uh some issues there. Um, we are moving forward with our plans to um come up with a solution-based approach to every uh resident that is uh dealing with that right now. Continue efforts with the historic district and people with disabilities to address the ADA needs um in the historic district. I think it's crystal clear that we're all um involved in that, and um that is ongoing. We've made some great progress uh in the last year, and uh we are moving uh forward in regards to um getting an ADA sidewalk on our green, but at the same time, uh, how we can um be transparent in that process, hear from everyone that we need to hear from um and make our decision. Uh, we met with um, we met with Chipo and the Connecticut Restore Preservation Society, I believe. Um, thank you. Um, they, they were adamant that a sidewalk on the green would not affect our um historic status nationally or state level in any way. And, and um, that was, that was certainly good news for uh our ADA folks. We continue to push the needle on ADA. Um, again, the suggestion of the chair, we're looking at uh proving an area over um in front of a library where there's a, a table that's outside, we wanted, wanted to be able to access that. There are um some concerns, I sent you an email today, uh, but I'll, I'll work through all of that, uh, because I think that's a very doable project. Uh, we stay in touch with the Girl Scout troops, we have some, uh, still some stuff kicking around on the ARPA list as well as um, we'd all love to have the ADA stuff done and, and over within one swoop. But um, we're doing the best we can to keep pushing the needle and make the town more accessible. Recreation Advisory Board Director Bruce Watt has done a great job in revitalizing that. Um, we've done to, we, we, they are uh more involved, um, and we have some, some great projects going on, including uh the replacement of the tennis courts and uh ARPA funding for a uh ice rink. And also the ARPA funding for the, the um summer rec programs, which was um very, very successful. Uh, to the point where the town programs saw a drop in, in uh attendance, uh, it was so successful, so um. That, that is, that Bruce, Director Watts done uh above and beyond what I expected um with that. Uh, we've done a lot with the Little League as well, um softball and baseball and, and improvements on the field in all around uh town. And then, um, let's see, engage citizenry uh for the betterment of the entire uh community, encouraging uh balance among open spaces, residential and economic development. Obviously, there's a push for economic development, but we had to do that in a balance uh with not um chewing up all our open space. And also keep them in mind, our preservation uh efforts in our, our community that our, our whole town really uh cares greatly about. Uh, we are moving through a lot of that, as you can see. Uh, also, uh, there's, there's a lot of development things in the works right now in, in um town with Santini and some other things around that. Our farmer's market on the green, I think our green is becoming um really a center point for our town um over the last year or so. And, and continue to uh push that as it's really a focal point for everybody. Um, as you, as you, as I said, the farmer's market has been a success. We've rebranded our tourism approach, um, and I'll, I'll, I'll look to work that into my next town manager's approach, the actual name of the um, the, the uh Facebook page that we're using now. Uh, support policies for affordable housing, that's thanks to um planning and zoning. Uh, our folks here in planning and council for approving uh the, the Affordable House Housing Trust Fund, as well as the uh five percent minimum for affordable housing. Um, you know, a lot of times you hear in messaging low income housing, it's, it's not low income housing, it's affordable housing here in Talon. Um, and, and I think looking at in, in this process and looking at all the other towns in the area, Talon is, is ahead of the curve um and a leader in that. And that's a credit to this council. Uh, and, and explore avenues to create more community involvement in the town budget process. Um, while this, I believe this town budget process, oh. It did, it did go up slightly, not as much as we all like to see. I, I'm not sure that's from a lack of communication or a lack of effort, um, it could be more of apathy. As um, I'm hearing this from other towns that, uh, every, everything that Mr. Wyman could do, everything that we could do on the town part, um, we did um to get people to come out. Um, short of, um, in some cities do this, they send out vans to go get people to bring, bring him uh to um. That's done, that is done through um the town committees to get people to, to bring them to the election. Uh. The mental health and substance abuse advisory task force, um, we, we had a consultant report. We, we have that now, it's available online, I believe, are they coming to council, I believe, but I don't have the, the schedule in front of me, don't we have them, a report coming soon?
I believe it's submitted, yeah, I believe the task force is meeting on the nineteenth, and I think.
Yes.
Different communications to the leadership.
Thank you.
Attend.
Yep. Um, remote meetings is happening, that's, I think that's just the new norm. Um, so, uh, and I thank the previous uh town manager and Lisa Hancock as well for establishing that for all of our East. Any questions?
Thank you, Ryan. Um, you know, obviously I understand that this is the last review, I think, of the goals for this council term. So I think there's a number of items that I think we can continue to push the ball forward on, but I think you're going to be glimpses for the next council. The biggest one is, and has been brought forward, you know, by the public, I think the water issues. It's not going to be, you have to push, move the ball forward in a way that's helping as many people as possible. You know, I, I want to make sure it's, we're, we're actually taking positive steps, there's very little time for standstill. I think as, as you said, as communication can be put off the public, I hope we can do so as extravagiously as possible. I think the vision statement, I think we can get some work started. I know yesterday, CROG met Brother Strategic Planning Session, I couldn't make it, but they might be right resources on uh potential firms that could help, you know, collaborate, get community input, and get the council together with their stakeholders to, to do that. So that my suggestion is maybe, at least my perspective is the council right now, at this point, can help set some of the building blocks forward, so whoever's back on for the next term um has the tools to move forward pretty quickly and efficiently.
All right.
Um, and that's it for me for this round, so I'll uh, that's what the council will.
Uh, thank you very much, Mr. Chair. Uh, one point that I think uh that I found very interesting uh in school is the issue that you mentioned about the referendum and about how that affects our bond, uh, our bond rating.
Yes.
Can you, I mean, can either you or Lisa go into that a little bit further as far as what that means? I mean, because that's the first time that, you know, uh, four years that I've actually heard something like that where the way that it, it passed on uh the first time where like there were referendum quickly than uh how that affects our bond rate, so.
So, yeah, I have that question as well, um, and really it comes, and she'll, she'll elaborate more, but it comes down to public confidence. And going through the bond process with our bond counsel attorney and, and uh the firm that we use, they go through a lot of those questions, and I was there uh with Lisa for that. And a lot of it comes down to uh basically our structure, our leadership, all of you, myself included, um, and the town's confidence in them. Very specifically delineated in that, in the triple A bond process, Lisa, would you like to build on that?
You pretty much uh covered most of it, that, one of the things they do look at is how many times it takes to be able to pass a budget, and they prefer a budget to be passed on the first referendum. It just shows that the, the public supports the tax rates, that um the services that are being provided by the town and how they're being paid for. And it just shows again the confidence in the management of the town to put forth the best budget possible. So that is just one of the things that we're rated on, there's so many other pieces, uh, financial management, uh, overall management, community, uh, economic development. So on and so forth.
It went to last year, didn't affect our triple A bond.
Uh, because I think that, that's something that, just to remind us about that, when, whenever the budgets are coming up, because I think that's something that might get lost in the minutia. And so.
Concur.
Thank you. That's all I have, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, also Luba. Council Mary.
Yeah, I um appreciate how thorough you are with these. Uh, first of all, I know uh the, the commentary, the examples, um, this is very helpful, the way you put this together for us, so thank you very much. I personally would like to see us move forward with the strategic plan rather than updating our vision and mission statements.
You can do both.
Yes, I think, um, yes, you're right, and thank you, thank you for that. Um, maybe that's a good plan, um, but a strategic plan has been on our goals. Um, and I know it's something I talked to you about when, when you started, um, and it's something I think we recognized last year uh that developing a strategic plan without a town, town manager in place didn't make sense. And giving you a grace period to sort of get used to it, you know, and us to get used to you and uh.
Are you a little more time?
Well. I don't know if you have any more time, Brian.
Yeah.
Uh, but I, I would be very interested in pursuing uh the, or at least better understanding the steps involved. And as you mentioned, the costs involved in really developing a strategic plan, because um we don't have one. And we make decisions all the time without a guiding document uh that, that has community buy-in. And, you know, it, it, it's such an important uh way to govern, and we're just doing the best we can, um, which is great. And not, not to be critical of, of what we do and how we do it, but I think we could improve. And I think having a strategic plan would be very instrumental in that process.
So that would, that would come down to, you know, you're, you're here to join us, the next budgeting, um, I'll make sure it's in there, um, we would have to budget it.
Okay, and you think it's between eight hundred and eighty-five hundred and three, wait, can you tell me again, I wrote that wrong?
You know, a vision statement would be much cheaper, and that's the lower end, a strategic statement would be up near three thousand. And that's all the, you know, it's, it's a lot of community outreach, polling, talking to people, business outreach.
Yep.
Um, there's, there's a whole lot uh involved uh with the strategic plan, obviously, and so many things to weigh on an economic uh side of things, that is, just every.
Yeah, of course.
Uh, so, you know, in, in meeting, watching CROG, and I, we, we attended a forum on strategic planning as well. Um, there's a kind of a sales thing, but um, it kind of outlines all that, and, and, and I can get an estimate from a respected forum, certainly, um, and, and go forward to, Sarah, I intended for the, the product, it might have been CCM. Uh, but I'm happy to get an estimate for nada, I'm sure.
Yeah. Thank you, yeah, I, I mean, I agree that it's a long-term commitment to develop a strategic plan. I mean, you don't just write a check and get a strategic plan handed back to you. Um, right. Uh, that, that it's probably, you know, a multi-year process at the very least. Um, and so planning the cost of it is obviously an important first step. So thank you for kind of flagging that for us, and I would be interested in seeing an estimate on how much am I cost and a sort of a timeline of how long it would take, but.
Got it.
I'd leave it to the council to decide that, thank you, thank you.
Any other comments from customers, council com?
It's, you know, almost about here that uh, you know, the board, and I think uh and I'm not just saying that, I think you're moving forward with a lot of points. And I think you want a, a, a sidewalk. Um, the problem is, I think it was like, um, I think you're moving, it's been what, six, eight years, but it's been sitting there, I mean, I think you're moving forward, I like that. There's a couple of other issues, because the, our residents has more people, more people. I don't know how far we can go with those, with those issues. And the town's responsibilities, our state insurance company, whatever it is. But there is one thing that the, I would personally, I would like you to ask you that. Soon or better, then better. Have those folks, whatever it is, you know, what are yours, buy whatever, there's nothing we can do, or whatever it is. So they won't be hanging up, hanging on, whatever it is, at least they know what to do. And get the heck out of the town, uh, move out of whatever, whatever, whatever they want to do, let them do it. But I know it's not easy because it's a big responsibility, but at least they shouldn't be. But I know it's not easy because it's a big responsibility, but at least they shouldn't be working. Uh, no communication, whatever, they have done something. I would if they say, I mean, you are open, money, but like, you know what? They can give us the day writing, but I don't know, I don't get it, but it's like, I'm trying to be, some help to them, I don't know how long, maybe, they should work. And it's, it's been a frustration to me. And that's why. I'm. This time in the house will not be, not be for the election because of what, there's not, there's not much I can do for the, for the people. To work with you, but like, uh, not going to the town of Michigan. I want to do some for the people from the town, but like, your hand is tied up. And my resources is you. And they join you with you, and. I would, I'm used to have a lot of people. And um, I think you're doing so far to me, I think, my honest opinion, you are still probably doing more than well. And um, just, you know, just be open to people for their, to me.
Thank you for the kind words, uh, I really appreciate it and I don't know who in this council will be back, um. Regardless, um, I, I hate, I, I've said it so many times since I've been here, uh, I like all of you so much and I enjoy working with you as well. Uh, I think it's, I, I'm very happy and I wish it could stay this way forever, but I, I know again, regardless, I will um. I will keep moving forward, I don't want to live with any of these problems any more than you guys want to live with any of these problems as well as our, our folks here tonight, so. Um, you have my word on that, you see me attack problems head-on, um, and I don't like living with them, I'm not going to. Uh, so, thank you for the kind of, sir.
Any other comments from council members? Well, seeing, um, thank you again, Brian, for this very thorough update and, you know, you set a very high bar, bar for yourself for the next council and you want to make plans for them. I think, I think we, I think we already set a pretty high bar with Lisa, we all came in together, but I think this is hopefully a, a starting point for them and hopefully whoever is on the council next term.
It is, Lisa put together a, a pretty thorough plan for the next council goals and how to put it together, actually, and she's uh, sent that to me this week.
That's great.
Already looking ahead uh, towards that, so I get that, I bet you'll see a lot of those same goals.
Absolutely. Alright, so that brings us to. New item eight point three, which is the consideration of resolution to suspend Talon's declaration of public health. And so prepare this emergency for COVID nineteen in conjunction with the state and government, having suspended theirs on May eleventh, twenty twenty-three, so.
Go move. I'm sorry.
No, go ahead, Brian.
Be brief. The council, uh, so um, twenty twenty, Mike Rosen signed the, the, the Hertzie declaration, uh, he attached this uh, to the, the, the. Uh, package here tonight is uh, communication from the governor's office and EHD on the termination of said emergency. Uh, for your review, but um, obviously this is a um, a clerical type of move here um, to, to, to end the uh, COVID emergency.
Thank you, Brian, I know there's still a lot of lessons that were learned and I do, or, you know, just send some gratitude out to public safety, I know they've all, they've all left, but they, they do so much heavy lifting throughout the pandemic and so many of us also stepped up. Volunteer in so many ways, so there's still obviously some struggles with the pandemic and COVID nineteen treatment and so many other issues that have their effects for the schools and for businesses, there's so much lingering effects. But I'm glad that we're able to kind of move forward and uh, take positive steps, help community. Yeah, correct.
I'd like to mention, uh, you brought up a good point and I was with the Department of Emergency Services and Public Protection, um, and in the Emergency Operations Center through most of this. Chief Vitell and his staff did an outstanding job being creative. Meeting at the, meeting at the back door type of pickups, they did everything they could uh, for this town to, to get um, safety extra above and beyond uh, things for the town, so uh, I watched at a very high level. The efforts of, of uh, our public safety folks, I was, I just want to echo up and confirm with some backing what you just said, thank you.
Sure. Any other comments, Counselor Murray?
What is the impact on the town, town services, town operations by uh, terminating this?
None.
And I think at this point, just put this in alignment with, like, other towns that are going to same with, uh, through the health districts. Right, seeing you for the discussion, I'll do a motion to approve the resolution as outlined.
Actually, I'm sorry, um, the resolution says it's a consideration of a resolution to suspend. And I would be interested in making the resolution to not be a consideration, but to flat-out suspend, if that's okay with you.
I think that is a, a healthy or friendly amendment rather to, to the uh, resolution.
Second amendment.
Alright. Being no further discussion, we will do a roll call vote, Counselor Murray?
Aye.
Counselor Khan? Pleasure reading. Counselor Luban?
Hi.
Counselor Nudichak?
Aye.
Counselor Nucio? If she's there, I'll ask her to unmute if she's available. Do one more moment before I say my eye, or Counselor Luban's uh, texting her to say, wherever you are across the country. More moment. Alright. Just speed. So I tried to unmute in the meeting, so uh, I'll, I'll just take that as an eye and uh, we'll pass the resolution six zero.
Sounds like a yes to me.
Yeah. Alright, that brings us to item eight point four, quick, right, so vacancies on various municipal boards and commissions. Uh, like entertaining motions to approve the vacancies as outlined in eight point four A to eight point four C.
So moved.
Second.
Right, any further discussion, well, I shall just repeat, if you are interested in serving on a board of commission, vacancies at taloncte.gov. Uh, goes directly to our lead town manager Foley as well as our vetting commission uh, subsidy numbers, which are made up of Councilor Nuban, Council, Counselor Khan. Obviously, plenty of vacancies still available and appreciate everyone's interest in serving. Right, that being said, we will do, actually because Counselor Nucio is going with us, we will do a voice vote, so all of the favors signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. That is unanimous. That brings us to.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, I just wanted, uh, so again, it's appreciation for everybody that steps up and uh, it's something that uh, uh, Counselor Khan and I take very seriously, that we did go through a very, you know, rigorous vetting process and uh, that, that is something that. Uh, we're glad to see people are, are stepping up, where we actually have multiple applications now for us in the various positions, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Luban. Alright, so I'm going to say nine, all business, which there is none, I think, except the ten, and part of the town manager, so Brian, I'll take it back to you, you're doing a lot of the talking tonight, yep.
Um, I know we're going to start out with HR, we filled um, for, fill, fills, fill our positions, we'll have last position in um, uh. Human services, human services, um, we had an admin open, they're going to hire for that, we have some openings up in um. Uh, DPW as well, uh, DPWs, while we're there, they're um, re- reclamation projects, uh, with the paving is going well uh, through the summer. Uh, our town building projects, obviously the fire department, I covered already, no need to hit off on that, uh. Human services, we have the, we have the play, I'll get more information out on the, on the, the great job that they do, um, uh, human services with, with the play coming up and, and you will see me at the play as well. The uh, community theater that they do is just absolutely fantastic, I went last year, uh, library continues to have robust events. Planning and development is going very well, um, in this town and I think you're going to see uh, some things moving uh, in a positive direction. Uh, Megan and I met today on a, on a wide variety of projects to include solar, um, solar, both of the schools, um, I met, we met with Walt today and then also solar on our old, uh, for lack of a better term, dump. Uh. It's moving forward, it's, it's just, it's a heavy lift and, and sometimes the greatness of our. Strict financial or conservative financial policies can kind of sometimes uh, be a little bit of a speed bump in getting uh, solar uh, projects pushed forward. So we're learning that and we're working with our, our town attorney and uh, the board of bed to push some of that uh, through. Um. I think that's really all the major stuff I have, because I've covered so much other stuff here. That's it. Well, okay, so. There's, there's some good news, I, I wanted to offer it to, to maybe council, but they would announce it, not me, I don't want to steal anyone's thunder, um, but I'm fine to do it and, and at Lisa's suggestion. Uh, we'll do a press release uh, tomorrow, um, in regards to the, the fact that our bulky waste. He went to go, no, you say it, I'll say it.
No.
Go ahead, that'd be good.
We do not need our go funding for it, um, and so the bulky waste is back on. Uh, there's also a funny little, I believe, resolution that you guys did in regards to, if there's any extra money that'll be used to pay off the Boy Scouts, uh, probably from Gazeebo. Um, so, yes, that was also um, done as well, so that we had approved our funding for that. Um, he's come to us with a couple of other things in a dumpster, so, so, you know, I'm going to try to work through with DPW on some of that kind of stuff too, but I met with Sam uh, today in my office, I'm getting that final, so um. The bulky waste is uh, back on, thanks to Lisa's staff for finding savings.
Thank you.
Counselor Nudichak?
Thank you for saying that, because honestly, I had thought about it earlier, I did forget, but a big shout out to um, Lisa for finding the savings. And I just want to say, a lot of the recommendation, I don't know which way you went, Lisa, with it, but we discussed ways with Mike Wilkinson in the ARCA meeting. I'll try and find savings other places, so thank you, Lisa, for your staff for handling that so well and returning money back to the uh, our funds to be used for communities and other places.
You're welcome.
Lisa, you can tell on that next, next council meeting, you'll be here for some bad news.
What?
Do you have some, the, the, the label is much more help than.
Yeah, nothing. Counselor Luban?
Uh, yes, thank you, Mr. Chair, uh, one thing, I just sort of building on what Ms. Foley was mentioning about the uh, uh, with the Boy Scout Eagle, uh, Eagle Soul uh, project. That uh, for anyone that's not aware of it, there's also a GoFundMe page, which she set up uh, for it as well. Um, so, I know that is, uh, I don't know if he has it out in the public, but I know that it's something that uh, to Boy Scout troop as well as, but uh, the VRC, that there's a GoFundMe page, like, that's going around.
Thank you.
Yeah, I believe it was shared around a little bit and so far, I think, uh, just to all check in, they raised seven hundred and seventy dollars out of two thousand gold, so would certainly encourage you to go and check it out and we'll get that shared around too. Any other questions, Counselor Murray?
Um, I'm just, I, I made a mistake, sorry, uh, the last thing on it is the new sanitarian. We have a new sanitarian that you sent us an email about.
Correct.
Um.
Mr. Boute.
Boute, thank you for getting that correct for me, I appreciate that, um, is there anything that we need to know about the change in sanitarian or?
No, we're, we're told me E H H D, that he's familiar with the town, he's going to hit the ground running. I have, every new employee that comes in, I want to just sit down with them for five minutes and work, yeah, care of the town and expectations of the town, and that will happen, I know they're not an employee, um, I can't, I look forward to meeting uh, with, with the um, our new health sanitarian. So very important uh, role in our town and our, our previous one. Uh, did an amazing job keeping up with, uh, people don't realize how much that, 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 that position uh, is involved in the building process and permits and, you know, ceterics and, and everything else, so she did a great job with that. And so I look forward to working with anyone, and they should be nice about.
Yeah, no, Holly was, was really excellent, I, even reverse luck, I wouldn't think I would have been able to move in the town without her, no.
Yep.
So, but Counselor, actually, you'll stop.
I'm sorry, I just, I said I only had one more thing, but it turns out I didn't, um, the governance letter that you forwarded from Lisa is just a formality, right? Just to notify us that um, the audit is starting, is that correct?
I vote yes, that is correct, uh, Lisa, correct on that, that's simple notification.
Yes, this is something that our auditors have us send out each and every year, just to keep you in, in the loop, that they've begun the process and uh, moving forward.
Wonderful, thank you very much, those are all my questions.
Okay, and then I'm actually just going to really quickly for Counselor Nucio, just uh, kudos to uh, being awarded that online abuse prevention grant, I know that's something that you were really interested in getting for the town and for the library to host, so.
Tentatively awarded.
Yep.
Um, so I look forward to it too, you know, but really, the group as a whole has, have gone a long way in the last year to really solve some of those issues, but I look forward to staying on top, thank you.
Counselor Nucio?
Yeah, I just want to say I was a yes on that last vote, I put my phone down, I couldn't find my phone, then it died, then I found it and I had to call back in, it's always a dilemma, um. And I, I think uh, that was, that was mainly it, I think.
Okay.
I'm back, sorry. I put my phone down, I had to go and find it.
No worries at all, if, if you want, at this point, we're just doing Brian's uh, town manager report, if anyone want to add to the report, any questions?
No, I'm good with that, thank you.
Thank you.
Did Tammy hear about those bulky ways?
Oh.
We got an email.
Yeah.
We got an email.
But she's really excited about it, you're right, Tammy, the bulky waste is back in business.
We found, we're going to dump it in your yard, we voted on it while you weren't here.
Lose the one, lose the one who has a land here, not me, but um, yes, I, I did know about that, so I was, I'm very happy to hear that I knew, Lisa, we would find a way to be able to do it and not cut it.
Yep.
Yeah.
Alright, thank you, alright, with that, we'll move to item eleven, which is adoption of minutes, eleven point one, under the intention to approve the minutes as outlined.
So.
So by Counselor Murray, is there a second?
No, second.
Second by Counselor Nudichak, and we roll call vote, Counselor Murray?
Aye.
Counselor Khan, pleasure reading, Counselor Luban?
Aye.
Counselor Nudichak?
Aye.
Counselor Nucio?
Oh my god, again, aye.
And I am an aye, so that is unanimous, which brings us to twelve respondents to council.
Yes, um, I have eight emails that came in uh, since May twenty-fourth. One was an invitation regarding the Yukon Blood Drive, uh, and one was a Memorial Day Parade invitation. Past that, uh, there were five emails regarding sidewalks on the green and an email regarding vacancies on boards of commissions.
Thank you, Counselor Murray, that brings us to item thirteen, chairperson's report. The joint chair meeting that happened weeks ago, I thought was relatively successful, Brian was there and I saw pleasure reading, Counselor Khan, uh, we have members of DDA, EDC and uh, Board of Education. Think like twenty to thirty people showed up, I think there were a lot of good conversations there and I think there's some, some hope, I feel that whoever's on the next council will consider taking that uh, forward, I think it was a great opportunity. It was relatively low cost and centrally located, so I think that's a great opportunity, um, as mentioned previously, Crog had their strategic vision session on twelve. So, sure, Brian has been in touch with uh, Matt Park about that and if there's any eventual synergy with there, uh, obviously it's a much bigger conglomerate, but maybe they have some resources for the town in terms of uh. Finding purchases, strategic funding right at municipal level, um, council chair hour will be on July fifth. And I extend on a communication to counselors that the town manager review criteria has been sent out, uh, and if we do on the twenty-seventh or the thirtieth. A lot to executive session on the twenty-seventh and then on July ninth to go over Brian's annual review, um, so looking forward to that and getting Brian's feedback from us about how we performed, or to ask you what him, to see him smiling. That is it for us, so.
I have one question to ask, Brian. I, one of the residents came to me, his name is Mark, sixty-eight, back shop. And I think we approached to uh, time in bonding, I think he, I think they will. Then you're doing, I'm sure about uh, complaining about noise, about dog, the noise and everything else.
You know, I, I don't know if he said that to me, but I remember we spoke about this uh, say today, um, go on.
So. And it's been texting me and hitting me, stopping me, and I said, uh, I'll ask you what the. Uh, the noises start from uh, six o'clock. Go on to nine P M. And there's this sign over there, it says uh. Uh, they put, recently they posted a sign, police dog channel area, do not approach, dog, this dog injury or that. Is it okay to put that sign over there, I don't know who did that, but is it a legal, but there is still there's a noise.
I'm happy to have our town inspector go take a look at that, any noise can. I'm happy to have our town inspector go take a look at that. Any noise complaints going to go to our resident state trooper? If they sent it to me, I would have sent it to our trooper for action. Those proved to be very frustrating. Uh, for our residents as well as our troopers and dealing with them and coming up with solutions. So check in with them.
Was it? Thank you.
Yes.
Actually, it's a good reminder, seeing me. I didn't, you know, you were looking into it, Brian. That was one of the other conversations we had from the open house was a, an older couple that lived in town for several decades on Doyle Road. Had complaints about the connector that is used by tractor trailers and often the people that hate to get to Stafford and other areas. Often putting people in danger that are wanting with their kids. So I know there was some discussion about a stop sign that had been there and taken away, or there's some traffic mitigation techniques such as. You know, temporary or potentially workshopping speed humps that could, similar to van steal, that could deter vehicles from using that road as heavily as the other main routes that they should be using.
So the state troopers have given that exact issue a lot of attention. I don't have a, a list delineating the times that they've. Patrold or made stops there, but they've taken steps and added a sign as far as a stop sign. I, I approached our DPW director on that. And basically. The reason to put a stop, stop sign should not be used for, it's basically slowing down traffic is the accepted practice for that. So we, I would ask that, and have asked that trooper act continue the, they put up the. Speed, the, the speed limit signs in the, let tell you how fast you're going. And made some successes and, and taken enforcement action there as well, but I will have and continue to do that.
All right. So that brings us to. I have 14 communications and petitions from councilperson. So if you have any communications or divisions at this time. Councilman Uticek and Councilman Luba.
What might just fun. I just want to congratulate the class of 2023. Their graduation is on Thursday night. Um, and all the volunteers that have been working extremely hard for the senior banners. Um, I'm going to be at Star Hill Thursday night, overseeing project graduation. So a huge shout out to. Um, keeping our kids safe and for all the educators. Doing what they do best and guide my kids for the future. And also congratulations to the eighth graders for their promotion on Wednesday night to own up to the high school. So. Good luck to everybody. And I'm sure the eighth graders will do wonderful at the high school.
There's a promotion for fifth grade too.
I'm sorry, in the fifth graders.
Yeah, you can't, you can't stop promoting these kids.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah. They get more promotions than me.
Thank you, Councilman Uticek. Councilman Luba.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, I just want to say thank you to the council here where we achieved one of the things that I set out. Uh, probably the two months after pandemic hit about. Uh, addressing the issue regarding the emergency declaration. So we've, now that we've accomplished that, and again, I appreciate everything that all the first responders and everybody who had to deal with that and work and support the town. During the pandemic, uh, that I mean, it's an undying appreciation for all you've done. Uh, now that that's been understood, other things that I would like to see if we can get addressed before the end of this, end of the session. Uh, that we've. I'm going to bring up the issue regarding revising certain aspects of code. Uh, the V R C, the adult entertainment. There's other things that we need to address. Um, which I think should be, and I'm asking, be put on the, on the agenda as soon as possible. The, uh, issue regarding the sidewalks, I know that we've passed the funding on it. I know that there's discussions and, and a lot of work being done, but. That's something that also I think that we need to finish before the end of the session. Uh, that the concern is that if it's not definitive and work being done underway. That it's going to be something that even though we have a funding approved, will drag on for another eight years like it's already been. Because, uh, we, while discussions always go down it and where it's, I always encourage us to make sure that we're doing the right thing for the town and the best thing that's possible. That's something that, that it's been, I took a look back and the discussion started on it over eight years ago. And I think that, and that we rehash issues on it several times over. So I think that that's, then we need to make a point to resolve for the end of the session. Uh, and the last thing is also addressing the concerns for our residents who are here, who are faithfully still here. Uh, that came forward and discussed the issues regarding the wells. I know that it's frustrating. We're. Asking you to trust us that we are doing what we can, that a lot of things need to be addressed and that because of these issues that Mr. Foley brought forward. Uh, some things can't be out in the public at this point yet. That doesn't mean, and I've spoken to, to a number of you. Uh, personally, that, uh, we are, that is something that the council has made. It's one of its top agendas as you, as we addressed. Earlier today, earlier this evening, that, that is something that we made a point to, as one of our objectives to get accomplished. We were working on it, but there are a lot of different issues that, that need to be dealt with. That it's not just getting the assessments done and getting scientific studies done. And even though the D, uh, D E P came out saying this is the town's issue. It's not just the town's issue and that there's a lot of things that have to be dealt with on a lot of different levels. The, uh, you know, the one of, uh, one of the residents brought up saying, well, uh, you know, about the liability issue and joined several. Well, it's not that easy. Uh, and that there's a lot of other things dealing with the insurance companies, dealing with different groups, dealing with different agencies. There's, you know, there's a lot of moving parts to this and we are doing the best that we can, just like we did with the, with the crumbling foundations. But it's something that, again, it took the crumbling foundations. I think 15 years before it was finally resolved and before there was finally a fund, that, that's something we're. Given how widespread this issue is and how there's no single point where you can't say, oh, it's just this here. When you have it spread out across the town and across the region, because we're not that anyone's dealing with issues like this. There's a lot of things. So, um, ask you to be patient is, is something that I don't have the right to ask you for. I'm asking for your indulgence on it because we are looking at it and if we have not forgotten about you. And it's something that, that we are doing the best that we can to get you the information as soon as we can, as soon as it's something that can become publicly available. But even with that being said, there's other parts that, you know, what can be shared and what cannot be shared and what, so there's. We will do the best, we're doing the best we can. I know Mr. Foley is on top of this as we all are and that we will hopefully get something. Out to you as soon as possible. Appreciate everything that you're, I appreciate you being here to keep us on point and keep us, keep reminding us about this. And that we do owe you an answer and we will get that to you as soon as we can. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Councilman Luba.
Yes. Piggybacking on something Brian said, uh, the town youth services community theater. Uh, is happening again this summer. The, I believe registration is still open for anyone who wants to register, uh, for the children who want to register. And the show is going to be July 28th and 29th. The show is the Descendants. Um, so it's a Disney show. So just, you know, if you want to go, it's going to be really fun. I would also like to add to the things to do before the end of our term that we revisit the flag policy. Uh, this month I've seen the pride flag raised above our state capitol. I've seen numerous towns across the state have the pride flag flown at their town hall. And I've seen pictures of the pride flag displayed outside the White House. When my kids look me in the eye and say, how come there's no pride flag playing at our town hall? I don't have an answer for them. And. They want to know why they're not being represented here. And I think. I, I want to know too. So I, I would ask that that be revisited. And then piggybacking off what Councilor Luba said regarding sidewalks on the green, I would like to see us. Uh, not just resolve this before the end of our term, uh, but moreover, I think our community needs to have a very clearly defined plan on how we are going to get from where we are today. To, uh, final approval of the. Of the design and layout and a timeline for construction and completion. I'd like to see. Us. Fulfill the promises that have been made by previous councils and previous town managers. Um, I know that there had been communication that went out directly to neighboring residents. Um, and my understanding is that that communication indicated that there would be a follow-up communication before a final. Decision had been made. I think we owe our community that outreach. And I know that this has been hashed over, rehashed. Painfully at times, but having a clear timeline about what is happening next. When is that happening? How the community can be involved in continuing to give their input. Is very important and would make this whole process more transparent. It would also hold us accountable. Um, and to each other and to our community to have a timeline that. We will have to meet on a regular basis. Um, so I would ask that that type of a timeline with multiple. Thresholds that we need to meet be put together.
I can do that.
Thank you, Brian. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Councilman Nuccio.
Thank you. Um, I'm not sure who is left in the audience. It's really hard to see on a phone. But, um, I wanted to kind of follow up on something Lou had mentioned. I remember the day about six years ago when I first met Claudette Morehouse and her husband. In the Big Y parking lot. And I had just won my first election here. And I remember her bringing, um, my attention to the water issue. And it piqued my curiosity because it had, was something that I had been following in other areas. And I was very concerned about what we were putting on the roads and how it was contaminating waters and streams and the environmental aspect. And she was the first person who brought forward. About her home. And I have done so much research on this and spent so much time talking to the residents about this over the last almost six years. I, I don't, there's so much, so much information in my head. Uh, I just wanted to reiterate as Lou said. There, this is a process and I am continuing to still fight for, um. What's happened, what's going to happen. I'm still on the Eastern Highland Health District Board. Mainly, one of the top reasons that I wanted to be on that board was about this issue. And I'm still working on it, not only at a town level, a state level and a personal level and with, with like as much information as I can. I know the process is very frustrating. Um, I would be very frustrated if I was in that, that spot, but I'm. I, I can, as Lou said, I can absolutely vow that this is not something that's going away. It's not something that is going to be pushed under the rug. Uh, it's just a matter of going through all the processes and all the steps to ensure that we get. An answer as close to beyond. A reasonable doubt as we can get. So I, I know there's frustration, but I don't want you to think that you are in any way, shape or form being ignored. Um, in this topic at all. So just wanted to express that, put that out there. Um, I think that's, that's really about it. I think that was the main point. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Nuccio. Any other councils? Councilman Khan.
I just cannot, um, manager to. To agree there that. What is, whatever the, whatever the value is, yes, give them a touch back and whatever is, they just look like a company foundation is. But I think that it's not fair, but it's, it's something for them.
Agreed.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Khan. Seeing new of their petitions, we move to item 15, publicly listed participation. On any subject in jurisdiction that's not council with a three minute limit. And if you are on Zoom, you can start live and raise hand function or if you're in the I M T, the root is front table and state your name and address for the record. So. We'll start with in person, Kate Bell. See your hand is raised.
Should I come up there?
Yeah, that'd be good. Thank you.
Can I say?
Sure, of course.
Okay, thank you. All right. So, hi. Um, Kate Bell, eighty town green. Um, so I recently had the opportunity to review a year's worth of town meeting minutes. Now, it wasn't all the minutes. It wasn't eight years of minutes. Um, but what it left me with was a feeling of gratitude for the hard work and determination of all of our leaders on this town. Um, and as well as the caring residents in this town. Um, so I just wanted to thank you first for your service. Um, as a resident of the green, um, I was reviewing these minutes to try to understand how we have arrived at the current status. Um, of making the green accessible. Um, and that is another thing for which I'm grateful. Um, this has clearly been a long and sometimes challenging conversation. Um, and I see that there's a bit more work to do, um, to reach consensus. However, the agreement that this project must move forward for the benefit of all of our community members is truly beautiful. Um, and I can't wait to see a complete solution. My understanding is that the most recent meeting, the ship bow and the preservation officers. Resulted in action for a historic landscape architect to at least review the plans, the current plans, draft plans. Um, and perhaps provide renderings and our input. Um, I'm so happy that these steps are being taken as of course, we know that the town green is one of the few in the state's original condition. Both on the local register as, as well as the national register in Washington. Um, and I do have some comments on the current plans. So I noticed that a crosswalk is tentatively planned on the North Carriage Road, which is a quiet, lower traffic road. While none seems to be currently planned to connect the sidewalks on either side of the busy part of town green. Um, which is that busier road that connects, turns into Old Stafford. So some people think it's Old Stafford, but so you know what I'm talking about. Um, there's a sidewalk on the St. Matthew's side and there's also a sidewalk that leads up to the North Carriage Road. They do connect, but there's no crosswalk there. Um, I'm a little bit concerned that that busier road isn't being tended since for a lot of the events, that's where people park. Um, so I see a lot of pedestrians up by my house there. So, um, it feels like a little bit safety concern if we're going to put dollar shirts across. Let's, you know, look at the forest and just. So additionally, it, for me, it seems like it would feel more safe and comfortable to create a walkway in the carriage room size of the green proper. Rather than down the middle, both search to the 19574 side of the green for much of it. Um, which is in the current draft plan. This will keep the length of the proposed walk about the same and would greatly increase the pleasantness of using the walkway. But invite any of you to try both paths and see what you think. It really feels very different. Um, as it would broaden the distance between the walkway, users and heavier traffic. Um, the grass map could then be used for events facing the busier road so that that side could still be accessible as well. So we still have full use of the green to be accessible for all residents. Really good space and we're lucky to enjoy it. Feel really fortunate to live in the green. And in fact, I'm the direct butter of this project. If you look in the plans, the one driveway you see is mine. So I came to this meeting feeling curious about how as a, as in a butter, I could be informed of the next steps. And plans on for this project. I know that it's still in draft and it's not very finalized yet, although there is funding attached. Um, and so. Here I came and I have sort of an answer. I hear, I heard, um, this Murray suggests that perhaps some direct response finance be put out to direct neighbors. Um, which I imagine would include, uh, butters. And if I understood from back there, perhaps Mr. Foley agreed. Um, so thank you. I think that that, um, would be really helpful for my family. And I think in talking to many of the residents, it'd be helpful for them as well. Um, many of my neighbors, people that has worked at Trump Commission, but that is not the rest of, we are not, we are just residents. That live there. So we're not really in the loop about everything. So it'd be really helpful to feel like we could be part of the conversation and we're not trying to make anything difficult. Um, but we want to feel that our voice has, has a place in the. Thank you.
You know, you can breathe on Zoom. We'll continue with in person. It's not a good reason. So I just wanted to follow up with Mr. Mr. Luba's comments about, you know, trying to be patient as much as possible, given this. But I also don't, I don't necessarily agree with the, the comparison of crumbling foundations. I understand from a tax perspective, there's an issue there, but the entity that's poisoning my well is not a private entity. It's the town. I mean, I've had an Apex lab report. It was a hundred and twenty page report to determine if anything else, any other sourcing was the problem. It wasn't my own, my own water softener was off. Everybody, D E P has stated to as much of a certainty as they can, that. Everybody, DEP has stated to as much of a certainty as they can, that road salt run home. There's no other equivocations. So I don't necessarily, when it's the town doing it and the town is also collecting taxes from me on top of it, it's, it's a little little bit of a shot and a shot and a punch in the gut. You know, on top of this, not only the water is not potable, it's actively like ruining infrastructure within my household that I'm sure Claudette can attest to this, that we're on the hook for. And again, like, you know, to Mr. Khan and Mr. Bully's, you know, comment about trying to work with the tax assessor. I'd be really curious to see what amounts you're going to go with, you know, in talking to the tax assessor previously. I did get mine reduced for the cost of an RO system three years ago. I know that that adjustment hasn't gone up as the cost of the RO has gone, plus in finding, delving more into this, there's gonna be a huge wastewater disposal system that's accustomed to it. In addition to this, if I go to semi-property, there's a stigma associated with this. This is all public information. So, you know, I would be very curious. I'm talking to my realtor. She's, she's having a real tough time valuing my house. You know, her guess is thirty percent of the of the market value, just take it off the top. So I'd be really curious to see what your assessor is going to do and what that process is gonna be like, because it was not an easy thing for me when I did it, even with the small amount that I have. But yeah, I I look forward to seeing more information. I'm hoping for a resolution in the very near future. Because, you know, I'm going on seven years with this situation and it's not, it's not tenable. I I I understand that they ask for patience, but I'm, I'm at my limit.
Thank you. I'm sorry, in your name again for?
Sean Laffin.
Okay, thank you, Sean. Well, actually, sorry, I think we had, I think George, you were next, because you haven't spoken, and I think Doman, the blue shirt back there, and then we'll go to the green and then Claudette.
Well, y'all know me, George Ulrich, fishing game road. A couple of quick things. On private property within reason, I don't care what you have for a flag. Public property, this United States of America, we only got one flag. Leave it at that. You don't need any of this crap. As far as a middle school meeting with the police, I was there, Brian was there, John was there, Tammy was there. You wanna know what's going on? I don't even have a computer. I knew the meeting was going on. So it's within, without, with, not within my reason to understand why anybody didn't know that there was a meeting at the Talon Middle School and why they didn't show up. I did. The last thing is the salt. I have the foundation problem. I don't have the salt. Two different things. And it did take years to get something more. But on the salt, we've known for as long as we've used salt, it was a bad thing. My father worked for the town for fifty years. He was told fifty-plus years ago, stop using so much salt, it's messing with people's wells. It's been known, the town workers have known this for fifty years or more. Cut out with all the salt and all the other crap. Granted, sand doesn't work as good. I know it, I don't know whether it's a state mandate. Do we have to use all this other crap? Or it's a legal problem that somebody's gonna have an accident, say you didn't salt the roads or put all this chlorine or whatever this other stuff is they're putting on. Maybe it's a legal issue. I don't know why we can't get out of it. Use cat litter, use something. But don't use all these other things because as we found out with the foundations, this is probably still just beginning of the salt problem, because we didn't really get into this stuff until six, eight years ago, when we really got to where we didn't even use sand at all anymore. So I think it's only gonna affect more and more wells as this goes on. We don't know what's going on underneath the ground, which way the water is running and stuff like that. We need to enlist, is a reason why, because they tell us with the water, it's a town problem. And yet you're gonna tell us that we have to use salt or something like that. We need to find out why and what's going on there and why we can't stop the use of stuff that we know is contaminating. Thank you. Thank you, George.
Right, thanks. So sorry, the dumb is the checkered shirt, then Claudette, then I think the dumb is the green shirt.
Hi again, Ed Tremblay for Harvest Lane. I just came tonight really to help support these people, but I have a well, so it's just concerning the way we are. One of the other thing, I'm sitting here with this green ADA walkway. I would like the town to pay attention to their existing ADA walkway, which is the one in Crandall Park. My wife and I walk that daily. We have a handicap neighbor who has a wheelchair-bound daughter. And about two years ago, you replaced the fishing pond walkway bridge or whatever it is that was used in the fishing area that's between the lodge and ball fields. But they never paved over the ramps to either side. So you've got an area that's about this high where the wheelchair is impossible to go over. So I I just think, you know, the town could at least finish the job that they started when they replaced that and hopefully make that ramp and area and also pay attention to the bridge, the wooden bridge that goes over the brook leading from the Little League field through the woods on that ramp. That bridge has deteriorating boards. You're gonna be in a lawsuit if somebody falls through, the boards are breaking. But I'm just trying to help the people who, if that walkway was for handicap people, we have to make it accessible. Thank you.
Thank you. And then Butter?
Butter, who else, eighty-nine year old, right? Just wanna kind of clarify, clarify the chemicals on the road. It's not, it is salt, but it's also the blue brine, the chloride. That's what's rotting out our plumbing. That's what runs out your cars. It's the high levels of chloride. And in that state report that I have, it's two hundred and fifty milligrams per liter. That's the corrosive level of the metals. Mine's over nine hundred at one point. So I just wanna clarify, everybody says salt, salt, and everybody quickly goes to water softeners. Also, I was wondering if I could get a clarification on this tax reduction. We've been asking for years to see if we can get help with our taxes. Nothing was forthcoming, but I'm glad John got his. Why wasn't something forthcoming to the rest of us as to a process? To get our taxes reduced as well. I remember crossing paths with Mr. Foley during the budget hearing two months back, and this topic came up. And he said, well, all you gotta do is get an RO estimate, take it to the tax person, Jason, he's gonna tell you no, and then you have to go to the Board of Assessment Appeals. Why wasn't this said to us five years ago? So now I'm gonna go and do this process, but by rights, I should be taking my twenty sixteen taxes up then, because that's when I should have got it. And I really take offense at Sammy's comment of suggesting that the manager just tell us something like move. I've been in this town for forty years. I paid taxes for forty years. The town damaged my water resources. If someone damaged your car, you would want somebody to be accountable and fix it. That's all we want. Throw us a bone. I know there's a process. We don't maybe need to know the details or we're not supposed to know the details, but throw us a bone so that we know, you know, what, what's, that something's going on. When we don't hear nothing, it's crickets. So what are we supposed to think? We have a whole new board probably coming in in November, so now we have to start all over. Y'all know that, you know, we've been talking about this for six years. And you know, according to DEEP, the only really way to fix it is to bring in public water. But we know that's gotta have the price tag. We know that. So there's gotta be another solution. Obviously, you know, you're all working on it, so we're told, but that's all we're told. We're working on it. Well, I worked on it for six years. And, you know, we're, we're no, I'm no further along now than I was when I first met Tammy. And my repair bills are going up. So, and then again, you're asking for me to pay my taxes. I sit here every year and, you know, they're asking for more and more and more and more. So that's kind of where I'm at, and that's my frustration right now. Every little bit extra I get, I gotta fix the faucet. I gotta change a fitting or, you know, a whole, a whole fixture. Not easy. I mean, go home and put duct tape on all your faucets for a whole week. You can't use them. Live out of the jug. And I appreciate the water the town supplies. I really do. But do that. Don't use your faucet or whatever for a whole week and see what it's like.
Butter? And in a town like Green.
Yeah, these are all my neighbors.
Yes.
For Zindel's revolt. Same problems, I won't reiterate. That pretty much had all the same issues. Been listening in and I'll just say, it's good to hear you say that you are trying to do something behind the scenes and we don't like it, but I think you've acknowledged that. Brian, you said you've asked for a timeline and you can't get one either. So I would just say, within the spirit of disclosure, what everybody's saying, you know, it's not tonight. Can you give us some idea? When we'll know? Is it six months? Is it a year? Because a lot of people, as I've mentioned today, are gonna move one way or the other. And then maybe the last thing I'll just say is, you know, we've called, you know, Joe Courtney's office. I don't know what we should call the senator's office. I know when I called Joe Courtney's office, they told me Tammy, who I've been on Zoom calls with the state and whatnot, is is in conjunction with him. So all I'll just say is, you know, we get together all the times as neighbors. If there's anything we can do to meet with anybody facilitated by Tammy or you, we'd be happy to do that, if you think it would help. If it's whether it's a rep or it's this, even state senators, we'd be happy to do that. Just let us know, because we're obviously just don't know what to do at this point.
Bob DeMarley, ninety-two Merle Way. Again, I, I'm not gonna beat the dead horse too much, but you know, unlike crumbling foundations where you can get your house razed and you get a new foundation, you can't find new water unless you forget it. So, so that's, that's kind of what it looks like. And and I agree with Claudette. I was a little frustrated with Sammy's comment that says, you know, just tell us the answer so we can move, right? We don't want, I put a lot of blood, sweat and tears in my property and I want, I want water. So what I would ask the council is, is I hope that they are pursuing things in parallel. I know that, again, this is a difficult issue, but I really think, you know, to run water out there, we need additional assistance other than the town. But unless we do a, a community well perhaps, or we put a central RO system somewhere to feed all the houses. I just wanna make sure that we're looking at different options to get this resolved as quickly as possible.
Thank you. Seeing no one else personally online with their hands raised? Is it a comment to Brian or? Is it, are you asking the back and forth of residents or?
No, I can't read this. It's a comment to Brian or and a piece two of the text, you know, you just heard person got a tax break, it sounded like, but other people that know about the tax break, so there's a tax break been going on for a while. Like this is, I thought, a new thing that this council talked about a few months ago. And I think that was gonna make another good point, if they've been having problems since. Now, how many years do they get?
It'd be something about that.
Yes, my state, that's twenty bucks. They get that, that, one, that's no offensive, but they get that money to, but sure, thank you. That's the word, that makes sense. So I just, personally, I would like a clarification. If you can give one, if that's
Off the, off the top of my head, I don't know why it was brought up prior to this, this year, when I, when I found out about it. But basically, you get your tax bill and you can bring in and appeal your tax bill. Typically, an assessor in any town is gonna deny the appeal and let it go to the Board of Appeals to have it heard. And they'll either accept your appeal or not. And and I believe it was your case that they did. So there's, there's, that they've accepted his appeal and lowered his taxes based on that. And as Claudette summarized our conversation along those lines of, you know, that's, that's free for any of us to appeal our taxes. Certainly, they would, they would have an opportunity to do that with their salt and their wells.
It's just, I think they just have a frustration that it just didn't really fully know they could do that. I'm not sure. Okay, but thank you for the clarification. And I just, the resident, they do, one was a different way, because
I think it's his creativity of coming up with that idea. Mr. Laffin's creativity.
Yeah, I was gonna say, you know, to residents that would have the water issue, I do feel extremely that, like extremely bad for everybody and I can't even imagine what it's like and I don't even have any words, but at least we're trying to do something with a tax, some sort of tax relief and I think these residents are screaming that they want to be part of that process. So I don't know if that's something that some committee, your subcommittee can discuss. And I know some of it, like Lou said, is private information, but I mean, it can't be hundred percent private. So we have to break into executive decision. I mean, exactly, talk about something more private, if that makes sense, but I think
Or, or in the very least, similar to how we have a webpage dedicated for crumbling foundations, maybe utilizing the road salt task force webpage to offer residents that have afflicted issues an avenue to, to go through this process through the assessor and the Court of Assessment Appeals, you know. Might be worth exploring and having published. So, you know, sometimes some people have inside information they only know about if it becomes public. So you know, having it there is the avenue. And then obviously, I think other residents, so they speak together as a community, I think that's an opportunity that's available, big grassroots, more folks have that chance to go through the process, get that relief.
That was my questioning. Once again, Steve, thank you for
Yeah, no problem. And and I did recognize your name, Claudette. I was partially waiting for Arthur to return before, if you were gonna speak a second time for public participation. I just wanted to give her the chance to get settled in so you could speak again. So.
But I just wanna say that I didn't go to, I think his name is Jason Lawrence, the tax person. Probably about three years ago, asking this question. When my business property taxes went up four percent, I questioned him and I also brought this up. And he's, oh, no, we don't have a program like that. Like the crumbling foundations. Wouldn't he have been right to direct me to the Board of Assessment Appeals at that point?
That I wouldn't be a hundred percent certain of. That probably a question for providing the touch base with Jason on, but certainly that is a possibility.
Okay, and I just have one other comment about the, um, voice though.
Project?
Project.
Yes.
I'm helping them with the plantings around the gazebo and I was over there meeting with him and I think it was his mom. And there's a whole thing of brush between the gazebo and the road. And there's a stone in there with a plaque on there. I believe it's from, uh, this is Crandall. Ain't even hardly seen it. And as the brush is overgrown, and I don't, this is outside of his scope of this project. But for the, to get the visuals, the gazebo, is there any way that someone can clean it up? Like prune it down, trim it up, and then in the back is a huge dead tree. I don't know if that's slated to come down. And to the right of it, looking at it from the road, there's, there's something that's half dead. So for him to do all of this and then hide it behind everything that's dead, you know, I was just wondering if any, if there was anything slated to get that cleaned up.
No, we can have to look into that and have the, the manager fully touch base with BPW and our tree board to see the status of that area.
Sam sent me a list. And I referenced it earlier and left that part out, but a list of everything that, that they would ask the town to do around that area.
Okay, no, great. Thank you.
Yeah, that, that was outside the scope of his actual Eagle project. I was there looking to see what was gonna be planted and I, I noted, you can't see nothing. Everything is either dead or overgrown and whatever.
Okay, thank you. All right, any other public comment? Sorry.
Yeah, Bob DeMarley again. I have to say this, ninety-two Merle Way. It's the tax break, I think, is a nice thing to consider based on everything that we've been through for repairs and things, but I don't wanna lose sight of a solution.
Yeah.
Okay, that's the real thing that we need to look to. The, the break is a nice thing to help itself, but we gotta get a solution.
I just wanna tell one thing. I'm not telling you to move out, whatever it is, but I'm telling town, Brian, to come up with an answer. And I don't want to, I'm not, I'm not telling you to move out. I'm, I'm not telling you to do anything.
And I don't want it to, I'm not, I'm not telling you to move out, I'm, I'm not telling you to do anything. My frustration is to get the answer to you, in a communication to you. That's my frustration. That's what I'm asking town to do it. On your part, whatever happens, maybe two years, five years, ten years, or next council, whatever it is. And as she says, it's another conversation again with the new, new council. Will be the state, Senator, whatever it is. I wish you the best.
Man, hopefully, you know, I think, the one thing, at least it'll be constant, is Mr. Foley is with us. I know this is an issue that's transcended multiple managers, and I think Brian's task to move forward whoever's here.
So at least he's moving power with it.
Yeah.
He's the only guy.
Yeah.
With a passageway, it wasn't, it wasn't going anywhere, and everybody knows about it.
All right. All right, thank you, everybody. So I think we're at the point, I think, we're kind of circling the mic a little too much here, so uh there's no other public comment. Seeing that, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn at nine thirty-seven, yeah?
So.
All right, and we'll do a, actually, no, Councilor.
Her phone guy, she, she sent me a text saying that her phone one completely does.
So we will do a vote by choice, so all's in favor of adjourned at nine thirty-seven, say aye?
Aye.
But is any others? Thank you, everyone.